We're going to call it over to the city council work session for Monday, September 25th, 2023. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the whole vote.
Mr. Peter?
Here.
Hi, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Scott, Special Master?
Here.
Adam, Housekeeping?
Sure.
Here.
Yep.
Tracy, Coach?
Here.
Bill, Lookman?
Here.
Doug, Lookman?
Here.
And Jeff, Don't.
Yes, I did get a call from Jeff and I did tell Greg to go that he would not be in attendance today. He will not join us for your application either. So that'll bring us right to number four, which is action items. We're going to go out of order as Greg tells me that Kurt was wanting to be here, so we're going to give him that opportunity. So starting with there, we're going to start with B. B is a consideration of land transfer agreement between the city of Two Rivers and Two Rivers School District for L.B. Clark. Recommended action is motion to approve the agreement to transfer the lands to the Two Rivers School District. And Greg?
You recall, I asked the council not act on this matter last Monday because we needed to see a different certified survey map. We did receive that on Friday. It's in your packet. It says Exhibit A to the agreement or page 13 of your packet. This frankly is what we need for sort of this interim certified survey map reflecting the situation as it exists today. And it takes the overall parcel of approximately nine acres owned by the city, nine and a half acres, divides it into lot one, which is the parcel at the northwest corner near the school to be retained by the city, and lot two, 7.406 acres, which is the entire balance of the city's property. This then comports with what you see in the agreement for sale of real estate on page one, seller agrees to sell, that's the city buyer agrees to buy, that's the school district, an approximately seven acre parcel of real estate described as lot two of the CSM that's attached. And you'll see that that certified survey map does incorporate going from the north at its south, that 30-foot wide roadway reservation in the event the city ever wishes to develop the street east-west from Bellevue to Parkway. It includes the 10-foot wide electric utility easement within that portion that we will be transferring to the school district, so that assures that right. And it also incorporates the written easement, which we never had had before, for a city list station that sits on school district property. That's right along the Bellevue Place frontage opposite River Hills Road. And then there's a blow up of that 25 by 25-foot utility easement for the list station over at the west or left margin of that map. So with this, I'd also point out, we reference in the purchase agreement, which you had already approved, and Exhibit B map, whose intent was basically to, in addition to the things shown in the survey, indicate the area of the existing baseball diamond that the city is retaining, the right to scan and use. We will give it, so I'm asking for council approval yet again, kind of redundant, but yet again, of the agreement for sale of real estate, and that a motion also includes approval of the certified survey map as presented at Exhibit A to the agreement. What we would do then, following council approval, is get this certified survey map filed with the Register D. What is now one city parcel becomes two. And then as soon as we close with the school district on this property purchase, they can go ahead and file that other, what I call a combined certified survey map, that combines the 7.40 acres that we purchased from the city with their parent parcel, the existing lot that they own that L.B. Clark sits on. So kind of bureaucracy 101 here, but we, a little more than that. We need the right map to attach to the purchase agreement. We need the right map and the right description of what we're conveying in order for the title company to warrant title. With that, would ask for council approval of the agreement for sale of real estate inclusive of approval of the certified survey map as presented.
Does this show us taking care of all the turf here?
It does say that in the language, yes. As do with the council approval previously.
Yep.
Yep.
Looking for a motion on this, thank you, Darla, seconded by Bill. Council discussion. Um, see none. Uh, let's do it all in favor. All in favor, Nikki, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we will move right back up to A, because I saw Kurt walk into the doors for us. So A is to consider authorizing an amendment to the development agreement with Wyntot LLC pertaining to project completion, timeline, and anticipated capital investment. Recommended action is motion to authorize amendments to the development agreement with Wyntot LLC. Greg, if you can walk us through that.
Yes, I've got a cover memo and a markup of the existing agreement for sale of real estate. This starts at page two of the agenda packet. Probably more than you need to hear, but just to go back, the city in 2021, I believe, acquired 2023 Washington Street. It's over 10 years tax delinquent. Manitowoc County was not inclined to exercise their in-round foreclosure rights, which they can do after a property is tax delinquent for three, for more than three years. Property has some brownfield contamination history, and our county tends to be pretty conservative on those things. However, the city had a, the city council is very supportive of doing something, for goodness sakes, with what had become a real plight on the main street. So after advertising the property for sale and having one purchase agreement, which was terminated with another developer, Wyntot and the city entered into an agreement early in 2022, providing for Wyntot's purchase for $10,000 of the long vacant gas station at 2023. It provided for redevelopment of the property for uses consistent with the B1 zoning district that is in and around the call pretty familiar with the specific uses that have been proposed there, both Briers and Brambles as a tenant, and also a Chilado and dessert shop that would locate there. The agreement also provided for a minimum $100,000 investment to be documented to the city by purchasers. The original deadlines in there were to, I forgot what they were, were to have the work done by, sorry, December? December, have the work done by December 31, and to document the expenditure for at least $100,000 by any earlier date, I think it was in Chilado. Or it is, that's where it is now.
Yep, that's where it is now.
Yeah. And right, and that, and that, that you're right, it's the same place. So right now, we stand with an amended agreement based on Mr. Andrews coming to the council in June that provided for spending $100,000 and documenting it to the city by September 30, getting the whole job done by December 31 of this year. As you know, from past discussions, this project has, the needs of that building are a whole lot more significant than was originally thought. Kurt can speak to the details of that, but cutting to the chase, it, in fact, Wyntot was approved last week by our BIDC for a loan of $150,000 toward an approximately $600,000 project, as it's now estimated. That's a significant investment by anybody's standards in our downtown. But it, I pointed out that it would be best to get in front of the council before the end of September with a request about those deadlines. What we're asking for here is an amendment to the agreement that would move the deadline for demonstrating the investment of at least $100,000 into the property to December 31, which should be more than safe based on where Wyntot stands right now, and the completion date out to July 31 of next year. So that is the staff recommendation. There's still a positive story to be told here, and we're all here to see that building look like a beautiful rendering in front of it. And I, nobody anymore anxious than Kurt and his partner. Kurt, anything to add to that?
Well, the delay since last coming down was we ran into asbestos issues. So the DNR came in and we had to remove asbestos. Then you got to go through about a period of time when they come back and test it again, which they did, which then delayed us. We kept the back wall up. We couldn't do anything else as far as to that because of asbestos problems. Then when the cost continued to go up, we, the bank came back with a number that was a little bit of a shortfall needed. So we went to BIDC, CDA, the first meeting they could have, went to them about six weeks ago before we spoke. Early as we even had this last week, Thursday, they approved, and we guaranteed the loan. So that's now triggered us moving forward. So it was to a funding gap and asbestos, which caused the problem to look like the owners who did mine it down there. And that's the last one who has had a state of, I could, every time I drive by, knowing that we're the ones who need to give that to.
Okay. Looking for a motion from council. Thank you, Darla, seconded by Tracy. Council discussion.
And by the way, if anyone has asked you about Briers and Brambles Market this past weekend, how does that three-day interim event to introduce themselves to the community?
She might from time to time do pop up shops, which is fine, because she waited for us to go. So the five buildings are going to hold back. Plus, she bought that as her B and B based on the zoning. She has to have some commercial property downstairs. So that's why she did the pop-up shop.
The one across the street, 2110?
Yes, that's hers.
Okay, awesome.
Hope she does. She wanted to actually stay in there while she was browsing, browsing across the street. They realized she couldn't rent it out, so it's not so, it's not very easy. It has to be a D1. Is it D1 first world, D1 thinking?
Just like a part of the residential.
Right.
Any other further council discussions? Any questions for Kurt? If I can see any. Questions on yourself?
So you're ready, you're ready to go pretty much?
Soon as I get the paperwork from Elizabeth, we get the funding, we'll be ready to go.
All asbestos is gone.
All asbestos is gone. We got to build, build a house on that.
I don't see this being a very contentious issue. So all in favor, Nikki, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your patience. We will get that.
We trust you.
Trust me. Back in work, this one is current.
All right, number five, on the discussion items. Under A, we have a presentation by representatives of the Vanderbroe Arboretum regarding progress on development of the arboretum.
Gentlemen, feel free to grab the front table if you'd like.
Yes, we shall do that. I've got some brochures here. I'm going to hand them out. Some of you may have seen the previous iteration of these. I think I have just enough of them. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Trust the city attorney will help you with the big words. Okay, my name is Jerry Fox. I live at 63635th Street. With me, Andy Brzezwecz. I have a house in Two Rivers, which I recently sold over in Elwood. How long did you own that house and not live in it? Forty-one years. So that's loyalty like you're not going to see.
And we forgive you, your recent transgression.
All right, I'm here to talk a little bit about the Vanderbroe Arboretum. Andy, I'm just going to do a little general outline, and I'll ask what you've been doing out there. The Vanderbroe Arboretum is a public amenity. It principally has been sponsored by an architect named John Derbro. It's 65 acres. Arboretum, of course, suggests, more than suggests, it tells you it's going to be trees. So far, there have been, I believe, 900 trees planted there, of which there are 220 different varieties. Actually, it's 1,500 trees that have been planted. There are 900 more that are going to be planted there. And by the time all is said and done, there should be 400 different varieties of trees, five or six of each variety. Mr. Vanderbroe has attempted to sort of steal a march on climate design. Some of the trees that have been planted and will be planted are trees that typically would be found in a warmer climate. His belief is that the climate here is warming up, so let's give it a shot. There also are propagation meadows out there, or I should say pollination meadows. They are there for the, for the butterflies, the birds, what have you. Many of them will eventually be filled with trees. There is, there may be, I don't know that this is true or not true, there may be an advantage to the city to have all of those trees out there. John believes that some of the stormwater that will be accumulated by the trees may give the city stormwater credits, which in turn may have an impact on the detention ponds that you may or may not have to build. In addition to being an arboretum as part of it, this will be certainly a hotspot for for birds. If you go out there now, there are a significant number of different birds out there, and it's kind of fun to listen to. Andy, can you tell the group what you've been doing?
I have been surveying and old trees. We have met with the Chicago Ethnical Society. The Morton Arboretum people outside Chicago have a way of classifying arboretums depending upon how many people are working there, the kinds of activities that are going on in the arboretum. And it is John Derbro's intention with time to move from the relative, relatively unsophisticated kinds of things that we're doing now, where trees have been planted, there are paths that have been put in. There's a one-mile path that goes around the exterior of the arboretum, interior paths, so that anyone is free to go out and enjoy the trees and just the space that's there on a warm golf course. But in the future, the possible intent is to increase the level of kinds of things that are going on, to include doing studies. As Jerome referred to, the change in climate is driving a change in the kinds of forests that are able to live and grow with the temperatures and rainfall that we have. And there are arborists who are studying the kinds of things that are going on as transition takes place from what were the hardwood forests of this area into hardwood forests primarily that are found right now to the south where we are. So we are tracking the kinds of trees that we've planted. I am surveying in each one of the trees that we've planted during the last two years. We have the species and subspecies for each of those trees. We're watching the health of the trees, recording what's going on with the trees, whether they're surviving or not from year to year. And we'll be continuing to collect information so that, to the extent that studies will be done on what it is that's happening there, we'll have the kind of information to support it. There's also a secondary intent on the part of the arboretum. It's not only as a place for trees, but also as a refuge for birds, as was discussed. There are many kinds of birds that are found there. We've been hearing some owls. There were a lot of voles out there last year, and the owls managed to take care of some of them. We expect to see more owls in the future. But there are many kinds of birds that are out there right now. So we're hoping to move from trees that are generally about 10, 18 feet tall now to getting to the point where we have a full forested area of, in the arboretum.
I don't want to extend this, but tell them what you do, what you call it geolocating the trees?
Yeah, we, we're interested in knowing to within a foot where the trees are. So we're using a GPS system that's very similar, but more accurate than the global positioning system, information that's in your telephone. And then that information talks to a geospatial database, GIS, which is very much like the systems that exist in cars, except that we can put whatever kind of background and additional information that we want into a database and then display that information as well. Part of the intent there in the future is for people to be able to access the information we have in each tree with their cell phones. So you'll be able to see now where you are, what's near, and identify and find a little bit of information about the kinds of trees that are present here.
There is also a building out there called the Propagation Center, which is about 2,000 square feet. And I don't know if any of you have been out there recently, but it's finally reaching some final stage of completion. Part of our problem, and this is one of the things we're here to talk about, is we have to get sewer and water connected. We have been told, we being the arboretum, has been told that there are two possible sources. I'll call it the Mahoots source and the Vogeltons source. One is, one would have us paying $7,063 to Mahoots. The other would have us paying $17,660 and change to the Vogeltons. And the suggestion is that somehow we would have to pay both of these people or both of these interests the money. And it strikes us, after looking over the various agreements, that this really shouldn't be, I'm just going to read a part of the, well, let me start first by saying we would propose to hook up to the Mahoots. It not only is cheaper, but it's closer. I mean, it's the one that makes the most sense. And the agreement between the city and the Vogeltons states, I think in material part, that the Vogeltons agree that these other adjacent property owners will not be required to pay the cost of such extension until the time they have requested and received service from the sewer and water extension, the end quote. We are neither requesting nor do we expect to receive service from Vogeltons. And consequently, we respectfully suggest that's not our problem. We don't have to pay that sort of money. And there's some urgency here, because we'd like to, within a week, start getting into contract negotiations. This is a tough time of the year to get contractors. And John has been told by them, unless it's done real quickly, we're not going to be on the schedule. So.
If I could just a little background here. Jerry's speaking to agreements the city had with Mahoots going back and helping out here 50-plus years.
Sixty, nineteen sixty-four.
Sixty-four, yeah, coming up on 60 years. Vogeltons in excess of 30 years. Mahoots fronted the money, if you will, for an initial extension north on Lincoln Avenue, probably before you do. Vogeltons, the city didn't play banker, apparently. These two families had to pay the full cost. And then the city positioned itself under agreements at the time as saying it would, I won't characterize it, it would endeavor to collect from any one, served by those extensions, monies to reimburse first Mahoots and then Vogeltons, depending on, I think, whether the property was served. City attorneys have a look at that. I certainly tend to put this on the agenda next Monday at regular meeting for closed session discussion, because it is pertinent to negotiations. And Jack can more fully agree with the council, but it's clearly an issue that needs to be addressed. The city's not proposing. It needs to look out for itself here, but past councils, way before any of our time, sort of position the city as an intermediary with potentially some responsibilities. I'll be quick to add, there's even a line which is a Vogeltons agreement that says, well, effectively, if this doesn't pan out, there may be some people, barriers for some.
Yeah, I think it's triggered by actual inability of the city to collect as a legal issue rather than, you know, difficulties the city might encounter in collecting it. So it does, Vogeltons at least provides for that. Their agreement does it. Mahoots, I don't believe does. So there is that out, if you want to call it, that in the Vogeltons agreement.
So there is that out, if you want to call it, that in the Vogeltons' agreement.
And there is the question of whether, if you don't serve the Vogeltons'.
Whether you can legally collect after these discussions. I mean, these are agreements. They may create certain obligations on the part of the city. They may provide Vogeltons' and Mahoots', or their successors, with possible causes of action against the city should the city not comply. Those are all issues I'd like to discuss with the council in close session before it takes any action on the request and recommendations being made.
So we will place that on the agenda for October 2 next week. Just wanted to provide that additional background.
All right, just to reiterate, my sense in reading the agreement with Vogeltons' is that if you don't connect and don't use it, you don't pay. And that's what, and I don't know who drafted the agreement. The agreements, you're right, they date back. The Mahoots' one is actually nineteen sixty-six, and Vogeltons' is nineteen eighty-four. So that's somewhat, okay? Mr. Bruce is probably in high school in nineteen sixty-four, so it's a long time ago.
I bet you it was after John Webster. Worked for Preston Wollem Mills at the end of ninety-five. I started in ninety-six. And I think John was city attorney for about seven years before that. So it predates John Webster. I really don't know who the city attorney was.
There's utilities on site there too that you can tap into, is there not? Because the old golf course would have had sewer and water off of Riverview.
Yeah, you're referring to particularly to the pond, the artificial pond that was on the golf course that they used for watering. I think John had the connection severed to that. So I don't believe there is.
Well, there had to have been a connection when they had the golf course bar and restaurant. There had to have been a connection to city utilities from there.
I imagine that'd be off of Riverview Drive.
Right, correct.
I have no idea. It's my impression that the Riverview Drive one would not suffice. I don't know if that's because you'd have to run service across the entire 65 acres to get to where it needs to be. I'm not sure. But yeah, you're right, certainly.
You also have the street that runs up into the property, oh, Do You Drive, or whatever. That would probably get you halfway there.
Apartment facilities right off. Yeah, the 42 is the place where it really has to come. And speaking of that, we also have to get gas and electric. John would prefer dealing with Wisconsin Public Service, who have, I believe, the gases on the, their gases on the east side of the road. They've given them a figure of $3,200 to bore under the road to connect. Their electric, I believe, is on the west side of the road, which would be very close. But I think there's a, and I might be wrong about that. I see the little consternation.
Well, I don't think you can hook up to the Wisconsin Public Service electric. They don't have to be city because they're in the city. Their sun is just proximity, but again, that's something we could probably discuss.
He originally talked to WPS, and they said, yeah. And then apparently that was squashed straight around, or at least this is what I'm told is squashed by the city, saying they can't do it. So, and the city initially, and again, I'm just repeating what I'm told here while I was not in any of these negotiations, said, we'll have to bore under the road to get there. And then secondarily, they said, no, we'll put, this is for the electric. We'll put, we'll run some overhead lines. And I think he's requested a quote on the overhead lines, but not gotten one yet. So, but in any case, this stuff has to be done relatively quickly, or it should be done relatively quickly. This is sort of tarried on for far too long.
Yeah, I'm not going to accept that it's tearing from both sides of the table.
I have a question. Who's the hacker Vogeltons?
You know that old motel, small unit motel there? That's what they own. And apparently they had some greater design on what they wanted to do there. That's why they ran the service out. John told me, but I forgot.
And number two.
Camper.
Number two is, I'm kind of confused. What exactly are you asking of the city? Or how are we?
Well, we'd like to, number one, we'd like a decision on which of the, we want to use Mahoots', we want to hear from the city that we don't have to pay both people, that we simply pay the people whose service we're using. That's number one. And number two, we'd like to kind of figure out, if you want, if you're proposing overhead lines across 42 from the east to the west side, what's the cost of? What's the suggestion? And the second question would be, if WPS could do both things, that would be wonderful. And is there any reason they can't? I mean, part of the reason, it would have been great when they were tearing up Highway 42. They could have just simply dug across, but things don't work that fast.
And the structure is up, which it was 2,000 square feet?
2,000 square feet, yes.
Was that already existing, or was it built?
Built, built. Go take a look at it. It's pretty impressive.
I looked right over there and hadn't seen you guys in the box.
Well, now's your chance.
I mean, honestly, electric in the interest of the ratepayers. The city certainly doesn't readily cede properties that it would otherwise serve to WPS. That's not in the best interest of our overall ratepayers. But if you don't have that price yet, if you're waiting on cost, on overhead, do we have something to get to them running?
They've been working on that for a number of months with the initial layout. And the plan's kind of changed along the way. And we evaluated it at that discussion with Vogeltons, well, a little more complex than just running lines across the road. They have certain construction standards which would require numerous poles to be replaced to get higher poles installed for us to go and connect to them, which, in my opinion, would be better to for Highway 42 and provide a underground service.
That's just ours. That's it?
That's it. Obviously.
If someone has other questions.
We've put a lot of value on the arboretum and what's being done there. And these matters have been the subject of a great deal of dialogue in the last few months. But can appreciate, just like so many city projects, we're coming up on the end of the season. That is a reality for contractors.
Okay.
Very good.
Any other questions?
I was just curious, and it may not be a fair question, but when you talk about the changes as far as growing season and climate, any sense like some of the species of trees that are kind of going out for this area and others that are more apropos?
Yeah, and there are different reasons for it as well. The beech seems to be dying out. We're losing the ash because of the ash board. The trees that are coming in are things like the Kentucky coffee tree, magnolias.
Sweetened gum?
Yes. I have a list of many of the species that are coming in. We have a lot of.
It's just passive.
It's very much a question of following what the forests look like to the south of us and then having paid attention to what it is that we're coming with. Common, the forests that we had. And the other part that's creating some, that provides some influence on what's going on is the fact that in the past, we had much more contiguous forests. And as those forests have become woodlots, in many cases, it's more difficult for the trees to move than it was in the past. The seeds getting from one area to another is a place straightforward.
Good point, thank you.
I just had a side conversation with utility director for electric, Brian Delman, who does a very nice job for the city tours. It looks like he says he's pretty confident he will have something to you yet this week. He looks like he's got ready to wrap up that part of his report and to get enough final number to you guys.
And that's for the electricity?
That is for the electric. He has the electric department. So he'll be giving something to you over this week. I think he's made on one more small piece of whatever. So.
So he's doing his job, isn't he? Yes, it's good that you understand the scope of the request.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us up to B, which is update on planning and permitting work related to phase three of the Sandy Bay Highlands Conservation Settlement.
Just, I've gotten this from Matt and figured it's good to at least touch on it. We expect, that's page seventeen, the last page in your packet, on the website. Matt, actually, do you want to speak to this? Do you have a little bit?
Sure.
Sure.
Basically, we're trying to move forward with the next phases, phase phases. We will do a summer of management master plans for the whole entire remaining properties, along with a green plan laying out lots and roadways. We're hoping to have that completed by the end of the week. And then in the first week, so basically next week, we'll have some sort of virtual meeting to talk over what they've come up with. If everything comes out real well, we will move forward with a preliminary lot layout, roadway layout, and basically get it ready for preliminary platsumitl for plan commission. Long story short is, we're hoping to be final plans, final planning by the end of the year so that we can bid out, start bidding in late December, early January for spring type construction. So that's the very short and concise version.
Thank you. Obviously, the budget for construction can either be considered by council throughout the budget. But things are going well up there. We got acceptance Friday of, or accepted a full price offer on one of the three remaining lots. There is a contingency for that prospective purchaser to be able to meet with their contractor and determine, because the lot they're looking at is impacted by one of the, well, it's part of the original. They're more protected by the original administrative logic and decision. So there is that contingency that they can make that work for their house. You've driven through up there lately with some beautiful homes being constructed. There are three or four more on tap for next spring that are in the pipeline. So certainly want to keep feeding that market demand for new houses.
So I assume that we have somewhat of a rough idea as to what this is going to cost if it's going to be in this budget. See, we're not going to have an accurate number till after, it looks like, according to this.
You're not going to have a final number like we do with any of our projects, but you're probably, it's going to, our cost is going to be in the range of 60, 65,000 or more per lot over there. So I'm just going to say service disposal looks at a million dollars to get 13, 15 more lots.
We'll have better numbers by the end of next week.
Thank you.
All right, then on to C, review and discuss draft agreement with Blue Heron condo association related to certain services to be provided by the city. Craig has that, I'll pass that on. It's very important to pick them out where I can take them.
Probably some extras, excuse to Jack, because I didn't have.
I'm sure it's one for you.
Okay. There's quite a few headed the other.
I think we got two more.
Oh, yeah. Jack's got a whole lot. He's got a committed number. This isn't presented for action tonight. I just thought it might be helpful because honestly, we wanted to get on this right away and get a take and read here. So, we started this with the foundation of the agreements we already have in place with Washington Highlands, Hockany Run, and Rivers Edge. However, those all go back to the year 2000. And there are some things that frankly aren't in those agreements, I think should be in here. And there are a couple of other things that distinguish this. A, this was the only planned unit development with private infrastructure where the city agreed to maintenance of the lift station. Remember that from our discussion. And per the council's action, this would be, for the first time in case, where we're offering to provide fall leaf collection at the edge of the roadway. So just kind of, I'll walk through as quickly as I can. Please feel free to interrupt at any point, but I'll be focusing mostly on the yellow highlighted here. So obviously, we need to have the right name of the entity, so the Blue Heron Condo Owners Association, with both their principal address and their registered agents' address. That's straight from Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions. The not highlighted text that flows from there is consistent with the other agreements. It notes that we have a policy under which, under certain circumstances, we do maintenance on privately owned water and sewer facilities. The association wants to enter agreement. Now therefore, number one, number one is straight out of the other agreements, no charge to the association, city would provide routine flushing service to water mains and sanitary sewer mains, all owned by the association, described in Exhibit A, which we've attached to this, and that would basically be the original plan for the condo development, showing them the private roadways. Number two, we did say in the other agreements that the city would provide at no charge emergency services in the event the sewer mains become blocked. It didn't go on to say what those emergency services were. We just try to unblock the main, we can come into your restroom and sop off the wastewater that's coming up in your basement, but obviously we're not going to do that. What would we do? So this, we would propose to have language stating, such emergency services will consist of using city personnel equipment to make a reasonable effort to clear such a blockage. In the event the blockage can't be cleared by the city, the association will be required to make arrangements with outside resources to address the blockage. We're not going to tear up the private streets, you know, we rip it hypes apart like we would on our city streets. That clarity, I think, is a gun for it. As relates to that sanitary lift station, which obviously the other three agreements were silent on, because we had agreed to do that for the other three. Matt has crafted this language, city would perform maintenance on the sanitary sewer lift station per the recommendations stated in the reference plan commission notes. Because that's the only guidance we have. We've not been able to find, nor has the association been able to find, an agreement that further codified those recommendations that were approved by the council. But nobody has an agreement on that. Maintenance shall be defined as the act of providing basic and necessary support and shall not include capital improvements such as pump control, panel piping, valve structure, or electric upgrades or repairs. We might add maybe or replacement there as well, just occurred to me. Capital improvement costs shall be the responsibility of the association. And then just to make it clearer, our intent is that said lift station is the property and remains the property of the association. There was no explicit statement of that in those minutes, but it did say that the city, before accepting the lift station, we would argue, accepting could be accepting for those maintenance purposes that we agreed to. Otherwise, if it was going to be hours, why would we have anything stated? We may take out the city. But that may be subject to some debate. And we have, I think we've been paying the electrical on that. So there may be some give and take. The precedent was. We are proposing that the association would have its sanitary services inspected, video inspected, to document the condition at least once every 10 years, copy provided to the city, and an initial inspection within 12 months of entering into the agreement. That is not in the other agreements. This is also the oldest system out there. We're not providing services for that. We think it's a given, given the limited scope of what the other agreements say about simply flushing mains, that the association is responsible for repairing all water main and sanitary sewer main defects like leaves, breaks, inoperable equipment, valves, et cetera. That will be well to be clarified. Number six, and this is the one where we're breaking new ground. In addition, the city shall have no charge to collect leaves from along the edges of the private road. Uh, in addition, the city shall have no charge to collect leaves from along the edges of the private roadways, which are Blue Heron Drive and Deerbrook Drive within the settlement. On the same schedule, terms and manner as fall leaf collection services are provided to properties of public streets in other areas of the city, in other words, you, you get with the other areas that from public streets, yeah. And the other agreements say that, in each case, the association shall grant easements to the city. We do not find any easements accompanying those agreements. So in this one, we thought it would be simpler to just say the association hereby grants to the city an easement providing the city with access to the private roadways identified herein, which you show in Exhibit A. And it's been extending for distances six feet past the edge of pavement on those roadways. The mains that we're agreeing to, to clean periodically or to unblock under this agreement lie within those private roadways. Figured the six feet past pavement edge gives us enough room on leaf collection services. And subject to field confirming it, but I'm pretty certain that the entirety of the sanitary lift station lies within the public right of way on Deerbrook just before, uh, I'm sorry, Blue Heron Drive, just before you get into the contact association proper. So that should be covered. City attorney on number eight, and this, this kind of goes to the concern Bonnie had expressed on liability for the road conditions. And this does provide that if such services are provided by the city, then the association for itself, its heirs, personal and legal representative successors and assigns, including any condominium unit owners, waives and releases any and all claims, damages, causes of action or liabilities of any nature. Drop the S there. Whatsoever known or unknown claims, in other words, against the city, its officers, agents, employees, et cetera. Uh, except only such claims as arise from, and I think there's case line out that there's really not such thing as gross negligence there in Wisconsin. So instead of gross negligence, we would have, uh, we'd have a carve-up claims arising from reckless negligent or intentional, reckless negligent or intentional act on an employee of the city. So that, that'd be the limited extent to which claims could be filed. And some protection on the liability limits that are afforded the city under Wisconsin law, under number nine. Jack can speak to that if you wish. The association agrees to obtain and maintain insurance coverage against claims of the kind expressed, described, you know what? That's still referencing section four. I think it would be section eight now. That's my bad, because we've added a bunch of intervening sections, so second. City will not be liable under the screen for any damages covered by such insurance. There's a severability and savings clause under eleven that if any provisions found invalid, uh, it doesn't affect the validity of any other portion of the agreement or, or the balance of the applicable provision. Association agrees to comply with the law, which and regulations, which is obviously the plan in constructing, operating, and maintaining its sewer and water facilities. Uh, nothing intended to confer any rights other than those expressly stated in the agreement. The association can't assign its rights without the consent of the city and it, it binds and adheres to the benefit of the parties or successors, et cetera. Uh, just noted, I, I thought kind of of interest. Our earlier agreements did not have a term where it would actually come up for renewal or non-renewal by the parties, nor is the language on termination. So I was suggesting that ten years sounds good, at least have it come up and if it lapses, if there's not action. And then if either party had the ability with some reasonable notice to terminate. And, uh, again, these are things that aren't in the existing agreements, but they are twenty-three years old. I think, I think the city certainly has the ability to address this on a case by case basis. So, any questions, any comments?
I don't think we should do this. Um, they pay someone to cut the grass and pick up the grass trims once a week. They do these same kind of drive.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they even watch it. When you raised that issue, I was kind of surprised.
Yeah, I used to do it. It, that was your job. You gotta go prune all the bushes, pick all that stuff up, pick up all the leaves. They already have that. Must are trying to get that contract down and get it on the city. They're not gonna be happy with, you know, that the city does appear to have someone around that's there once a week.
And I don't actually know what they're gonna do then.
Yep. I'm Jesus.
I would like to know, and I don't know if this is something you can legally do, but I'd like to see their budget. What do they put away for paying for the lift pump and stuff? They come and say, we can't do this, we can't do that. I mean, I would like to see if they ever put money away for anything. And what do their association fees go for? They must have fees for something, because you used to do the, they have like.
Yeah, for the solemable undergrounds, I mean.
And that has to be coming out of an association.
Roof and grass driveway.
I believe the association's responsible to the entire exterior buildings that they've done.
Easy to add.
Windows and roofs and siding.
Well, then how does that work? They don't own their own thing? I mean, I, my sister used to live in a condominium, but.
I don't pretend to fully understand, but it sounds like they own, like they own what's within the walls, but what you can see on the outside, what, what is the outside?
Jack's living there.
Clad, cladding of the building, their shingles or siding, windows, the building envelope is the association's responsible.
It's to maintain the condominium, so that they all look the same and they all.
No, I sort of understand that part, but, but still, okay, you can't see a lift pump, but it's perfectly important. I, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm trying to prevent them from coming around. And well, I think about more things, because that man had a legitimate point, Mr. Brody, about he lives in Washington Islands and they were rejected by the city to even consider anything to do with their lift pump. And, um, I guess that's probably my biggest fear is that suddenly people are gonna come around wanting this and that. I mean, are you gonna start collecting leaves there too? By Washington.
I think frankly, I think we, we should, if you've, you've cast, if the council did at least authorize the concept of doing that, not the final agreement, yeah, you'd cast the die. You're not legally bound, I think Jack would say, but you, you got a pretty hard time arguing for not doing that service for the others.
I mean, it, it's on everybody's utility bill.
Well, then take it off.
I think the service, I think the service should be.
I mean, I, my opinion is like, it, because you, you know, you think it's just a simple matter of collecting weeds. What happens when the road starts to break? Because it can't support those trucks.
That's what the agreement, that's what the agreement's for. Wow.
Here's a clause.
I don't know.
We would say no, that's not the city's responsibility. It was caused by an involuntary negligence. Or negligence. Your, your, their roads, assuming they were built to the standard that was shown on the plan, uh, are typical of what a rural road, cross-sections, say a rural residential would be, according to the engineer. So I'm not worried about that. I, I don't disagree with a lot of your points on that. I don't think the lease thing is gonna get us involved by a building lease situation. As a practical matter, Tim, I, I don't, man, if I was a condo owner, I knew like clockwork, once a week, the contractor was gonna come and take them away and put them out by River View Drive. That sounds better.
Oh, no, they take them, they have the.
Oh, they take them out there?
To the land, yeah.
Okay, better, yeah, so they're not gonna come blowing back at you. But that.
I don't know why they want the service booked. Maybe our trucks will be not picking up anything and just driving by, who knows?
And it's only leaves.
It's only leaves.
Your armpits or.
Yep. Yep.
And, yeah, and do all of us on staff, we should do a much greater clarity on the lift station and what our maintenance responsibilities meant. And you've heard about it periodically at the utilities committee. We do, but this seems to be the time to try to clarify if we're ever going to.
Can we even be held to it if there was never a signed agreement in the first place?
That's it.
Well, if all we have is city council approved, but we don't have any kind of contract or signed agreement between the city and and this condominium association, then how can it be enforced?
Are you talking about with the lift station?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Over the lift station specifically.
Or maybe.
Well, I think if they're ownership agreement.
I'm, I'm not sure.
It's their ownership, so I don't think they could come after us for anything, because it's technically theirs. We're just offering services. We, we have some precedent.
Yeah, we're, we're only obligated.
Precedent doesn't appear to exist, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we agree with?
So we've been doing it, we just never had an agreement in place to say that we would. Well, that was awfully nice of you guys.
Well, I don't.
Not successful.
I, I don't think they made it.
No, this is good for, as before, every.
Any further discussion?
I, I want you to.
Um, and the vacuumant in front of us, every once in a change, you know, before we come to board on that map tonight, but, uh, next council meeting, next Monday.
Yeah, well, and actually, I'm, I'm.
While you're bringing this, but.
I'm just forwarding it on to the Blue Heron Condo Association.
So maybe they want to.
I'm probably sure it says, you know, the camera there, maybe pushback on some of these items. Stay tuned.
They want their people to look at their warriors still.
Yes, yeah, I just figured while this was fresh, I'd like to bring it back to council.
Any changes that they'd want to see before we fire that up? Awesome. That's good to be there too.
If there are any nitty-gritty issues, I would personally bring that to the public works of utilities. And that is all.
Perfect. Motion to adjourn. Darren, thank you. Bill, thank you. Council discussion. None. I got us out of here by a record time. All who are prepared, we can begin by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you and good night.